So with that, I'm going to move into the meeting. And as I call you, I'm going to call to order with attendance. All right, everyone, the board members, I want to remind you again.
There's really bad.
If you would, there's a lot of background noise. And it would be appreciated if, unless you're planning to speak, that to the best of your ability, to continue to use mute, that would certainly help us as we move along. Since we're a few minutes behind our start time, I may ask at the end if we're not exactly completed with the conversation at 5:30 that we extend the meeting by 10 minutes. We'll negotiate that as that time approaches. So with that, I'm going to begin to call roll on board members, starting with our student advisor, Ms. Maya.
Present.
Mr. Hendrix.
Present.
Ms. McGrath. Ms. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene. We lose Dr. Norene. Okay. Thank you. You're present. Mr. Song.
I'm present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
With my presence, all seven board members are in attendance. And so with that, we'll begin. Wanting to remind everyone, this is our second work session in discussing the budget for the coming fiscal year. There's been, of course, a lot of give and take in this budget, certainly based on conversation last work session. I know that the Finance and Controller's Office and others have been working really hard to ensure that we are presenting accurate information and figures and being as transparent as possible in the thinking that goes into a budget for a district. Wanting to also recognize that the time has been truncated just as a result of the shift that we had to make in the district, oh, gosh, what, a month ago, six weeks ago, that impacted the original ideas and presentation around the budget. So the timing on this has been short, but I believe a lot has been accomplished in that period of time. The goal today is to continue to flesh out comments and concerns and issues so that when we move to a first read of the budget, we're pretty confident that we have a budget that represents the thinking that has been discussed and would be available then for greater discussion and eventual action by the board or by us as a board. There were pending issues from last time, which will be discussed. But to move us along, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm going to turn to you. And I know enrollment has a big impact on this budget's thinking. So that certainly is something that we would like to hear from you about and as you begin this meeting for us. Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, President Sullivan, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. And, you know, to briefly restate that you, we presented a budget presentation last week, and there were a number of questions. And today's purpose is to answer as many of those questions as possible. In terms of enrollment, currently, we're trending when compared to this time last year. This was a snapshot that was taken as of Friday, late evening. Our summer headcount is down 29.6% and footsie is down 27.3% for summer. For the fall semester, compared to this time last year, we're down 22% in headcount and 23% in footsie. So this is very much what institutions across the state and across the country are facing in trying to predict what the outcome might be. I've read articles that say that community colleges should prepare for dramatic increases in enrollment in the coming semesters. And I read an article this morning that said we should prepare for the types of decline in enrollment that we're seeing. And then there's argument and discussion and debate about everything in between. I've even gone as far as, I mean, really, the only thing that we have that's remotely close to compare to what this state and country is facing is the economic downturn that took place in 2008. The difference was is that that was, this time, we've got a pandemic, and that's the one variable that makes this questionable. And after I reviewed the data from 2008, 2009, the district began to see an uptick in enrollment in the semester after that. And it was the year after the 2008 that saw its greatest enrollment. So if we use that in any way to predict an immediate influx of enrollment, it's probably a semester or two. Again, that's just me looking at our data. That's also just me looking at what people are saying out in the academic world that are thought leaders and leaders in higher education. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Fisher, our provost, to share with you perhaps just some of the things that we are working on now and that we are preparing to do. I might even ask if there's time for a president or two to weigh in on some of the things that perhaps they are doing that may be unique to addressing the pandemic situation. So if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Sullivan, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Fisher.
That's fine. As, you know, the budget conversation is, but certainly, I know we're all interested in the particulars that you mentioned. So absolutely, let's listen. And if we have any quick ones, we'll insert them, and then we can move on to the budget discussion, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. So, Dr. Fisher, if you could just be very brief, I think that they would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, chancellor, and members of CEC, everyone that's listening to our work session today, I can say that we have redoubled our efforts in marketing. We're always in that process throughout the year. But, you know, as we go into it, we often look at the data on our enrollment charts that's really about recruitment and new leads. And those are scary numbers, and we certainly want to pay attention to those. And we have a lot of activity around continuing to drive leads. But the good news is our leads are actually up this time year over year by about 120%, which means our cost per lead is actually dropping. We're down about 50% right now. Of course, the challenge for the colleges and the challenge for the district in support of their work is around the second arm of enrollment, which is retention. And we have a lot of activities there. I'm glad that we have a president on deck to perhaps talk about some of the work that's happening on campuses because with everyone in remote environments, we're using soft phones thanks to ITS so that we can spend time actually reaching out and spending a lot of time creating personal touch with our students. And so when we think about driving leads, but also driving retention, there are three things that we're really focusing on, sort of big buckets of activity. One, of course, is our advertising. We put a significant new investment into our digital campaign. It's returning that kind of increased leads that I just mentioned. The colleges are actually putting year and money into that campaign as well. So we'll be able to drive additional exposures over the next few months as we're seeking both summer and fall enrollments, and that would be the new leads. So that's one bucket is advertising. One is kind of the old school way. You know, with everyone at home in a remote environment, we're going back to trying some things. Obviously, we rely on email a lot, but now we're going to go back and try some direct mail, some postcards, very targeted. We have access to data that allows us to get into the homes that we need to rather than just blanketing our entire Maricopa County with these kinds of materials. But we are going to think about those as well. And then I mentioned the personal touch. We've got some exciting things going on in the contact center. In particular, we have a new nudge campaign. So students, when they enroll with us and they apply, we now will be touching multiple times over the coming weeks of their engagement with us to get them to that registration point. Rather than just sort of letting them apply, sending them a single email and seeing what happens, we're going to be with them every step of the way. And I know that colleges are doing that with many of their own students that are already currently involved. We've created a spreadsheet, and every college has reported in their activities. Marketing has also put together a COVID-19 impact report around marketing. And so we'll have that to the chancellor this week for his review, and he can share what if that seems pertinent to the board as well. But I don't want to take any more time, but I did want to give you the good news that our leads are up and that all of our teams are focused and driving toward getting all of those students registered as quickly as we can. And with that, chancellor, I would turn it back to you either for questions or to hand off to our president colleague.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. President Sullivan, I would ask if you'd like to hear anything from any of our, from a college president, given the amount of time that we've got left in this meeting.
Thank you. Again, brief, I would be good. We're all very interested in the enrollment data and status. Having a dashboard or given the information that you are accumulating, I'm sure will be important to all board members. And perhaps next board meeting, we can have a further discussion. But with that, certainly, let's hear from one board president and then move, please.
Thank you. I would ask Dr. Rivera of Straight Mountain to provide a very brief update on what he is doing related to his navigator model.
Thank you, Governor President Sullivan and governing members. Yes, EMCC, we're currently piloting with the district office with what we call the enrollment navigators. And basically, what happens is that these students, for students that are going through the enrollment process, if for some reason they encounter some type of barrier or obstacle, then we have these navigate to contact them and help them through the process. So all the to-do items that are required for enrollment, if for some reason a student stops out or for some reason doesn't continue in the process, contact it and they're given assistance. And so it looks like each navigator has a case manager, about 2,000 students. So we're hopeful that this pilot that we have at the district office can be the model for other initiatives throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, for next week's agenda, certainly, let's have further discussion on this. Very quickly, any, with a quick update question? Okay, Dr. Gonzalez, back to you, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for the opportunity to provide that quick update. Now, if you're good, we will move into the budget presentation and specifically addressing the questions that came up last Tuesday.
Thank you.
Is that how you would like to proceed?
Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just again, given the limited time that we've got left in this meeting, I'm going to go directly to Gary Akinto to jump right into the presentation. Gary?
Thank you, chancellor. President Sullivan and governing board members, good afternoon. I'm Gary Akinto, Chief Financial Officer for the district. And Tina, if you could pull up the presentation and go to the second page, which is the agenda, I would like to quickly go through where we're headed in the presentation. I mean, you can see first on the agenda is the CARES Act. Because the CARES Act assistance has raised questions in the last workshop, we've provided more information here. I'd like to note, however, that it is not part of our budget and that the federal assistance is not for use as supplemental monies in the budget. And we'll get, we'll go through that in a little bit here. It's essentially a grant program to be used for students as grants due to the virus disruptions and as replacement for costs we have and will incur for changes to the delivery of instruction due to the virus. Second on the agenda is the cost of living adjustment, COLA. And here, what we were trying to do is to clarify the disparity that employees face in keeping up with the cost of living and why a COLA is important, an important investment in employees, which arguably are our most valuable asset. And it's only good fiscal stewardship to remain competitive in attracting the best talent. Next, we'll answer questions regarding the general fund reserve, why and how much. After that, we've identified some potential measures in the fiscal sustainability slide should we need to pursue corrections on the expenditure side as a result of the deteriorating economic environment. And then we'll top off the presentation with an alternative view of capital funding. President Sullivan, I'm not sure how you would like to proceed and whether the approach last week with going through the presentation, leaving questions to follow, is what you'd like to do today or whether you envision something different?
That seemed to work satisfactorily, the process we did last week. So let's continue there. And I'm sure everyone will be writing down any questions that they might have in particular areas when I call upon them to comment. So with that, please go forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tina, if we could move on to Slide 3, CARES Act, emergency grants to students. As you know, Maricopa has been allocated a total of $41.9 million that's split 50/50 between emergency grants directly to students and replacement of institutional costs due to changes in education delivery methods. The assistance for student grants and institutional costs are allocated to each college. So that $41.9 million in those two buckets has been allocated to each of our 10 colleges. Beginning with the student grants, the intent of the emergency financial aid grant portion of the CARES Act is to cover expenses related to campus disruptions caused by the virus. The Department of Education has stated the money is to get into the hands of students as quickly as possible. And eligibility requirements, which are on the next slide, will drive the grant awards. If we can move on to the next slide, please. So having said that, the act also identifies eligibility requirements, and they are rather, there's a rather extensive list of these eligibility requirements. And I'm not going to go through the entire list, but you can look at them, and they are quite numerous and include things like students must be enrolled in credit or clock hour courses as of March 13th, the date of the act, the date the act was signed by the president. Going down the list, must be enrolled in online classes, students exclusively in online classes, I'm sorry, must be enrolled in non-online classes, and that students exclusively in online classes are not eligible. Must be in an eligible degree or certificate program, must be meeting satisfactory academic performance, must not be in a loan repayment default or grant overpayment, and must be enrolled in at least three credit hours. Next slide, please. All right, the second part, the institutional portion, is to cover, again, costs due to changes in delivery of instruction caused by the virus. It's important to note, again, that this assistance is not supplemental money, but rather the replacement for costs directly associated with changes in delivery associated with the virus. These are costs that we've already spent, and we've already spent the money. This is just simply reimbursement for those expenditures. There's specific regulations governing this portion of the assistance package, and we're still learning more each and every day on the requirements that are involved in seeking reimbursement. But again, we'll have substantial restrictions that we'll have to comply with. And you can see them listed in the slide, things like they're to be used for, the funds are to be used for, to expand remote learning, for IT to support remote learning, and to train faculty and staff in remote learning. Show a clear nexus to changes in instructional delivery. May be used for tuition refunds resulting from change in delivery method, and we have some of those that will show up in the slide later on. Maybe used for hardware, software, or internet connectivity purchased on behalf of students. Maybe used to make additional emergency grants related to the disruption. An important part is that it cannot be used for enrollment. And as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned in his opening remarks, our enrollment to date compared with enrollment last year has been significantly below what it was last year. Next slide, please. So you saw a version of this chart last week. We brought it back, and we have updated the data in the chart as of yesterday, as a matter of fact. And if you look at the far right column, estimated net cost, those are costs that we have incurred in dealing with the virus. Those figures that are highlighted in green would be candidates for reimbursement through the CARES Act. And you'll note that the big addition from last week has been our estimate for faculty costs to extend the spring semester. And we've got those estimated now at about $3.8 million. Next slide, please. In last week's presentation, we presented this data in a chart, which showed numerically the increasing gap between pay for Maricopa employees and two measures of local inflation. We took the numbers from the chart and prepared this graph, which I think provides a more graphic picture of how inflation has been eating into employees' pay over the past six years. And let me just quickly go through the graph. The bottom blue line.
Mr., I know we left the CARES Act behind, so now we're moving on to COLA. So as you move through the agenda, would you just make sure we all are understanding the agenda item that we're discussing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So as President Sullivan indicated, we're now moving on to the cost of living adjustment. And the graph, and I was about to explain the graph, if you look at the lower blue line, that shows pay increases employees have granted over the past six years. The orange line directly above the blue line shows increases in the Phoenix Urban Consumer Price Index. And the very top line shows another inflation index. This one is the Arizona Gross Domestic Product Implicit Price Deflator. And by the year 2020, if compared with the indices of inflation, Maricopa employee wages have fallen behind inflation by 8.2% when compared with the Phoenix CPI and 12.4% compared with the Arizona Gross Domestic Product Implicit Price Deflator. Next slide, please. Staying on the cost of living adjustment. And again, at one point, you have seen this slide as well, it simply shows the cost of a cost of living adjustment of 2% in the middle column and 3% in the far right column. The proposal that had been on the table originally was a 3% COLA. Given the economic environment, we came back with a reduction to 2%. The 2% COLA has a price tag of $9.3 million in our budget, which is about $4.3 million less than the 3% cost of living adjustment. Before we leave this slide, there's one other item I'd just like to note, and that is the ASRS withholding will increase from 12.11% to 12.22%, which is just short of a 1% increase, but it will reduce employee take-home pay nonetheless. So we're going to move on to another section, which is our general fund reserve. And there were questions that came up in the last presentation concerning the projected general fund and balance reserve of $70.5 million. So we developed this slide to show how that reserve could be very quickly eroded, depending on what happens with our tuition. I'd also point out that, you know, the $70.5 million balance or reserve is actually less than 10% of our annual expenditures. And it's not.
Right?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, never mind. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was saying that the $70.5 million is in reserve is less than 10% of our annual expenditures, and that's not unreasonable in comparison, just to compare that $70.5 million, our burn rate, that is what we spend on average each month is about $60 million, and $50 million of that goes to payroll costs. The $70.5 million general fund reserve is, I think, another example of good financial stewardship. And you could see from the slide that the reserve, the balance, could be eaten up pretty quickly, just given the potential drop off in enrollment, if that is where we're headed. The slide shows a precipitous drop in revenues and hence much a lower general fund reserve that could result in a drop of enrollment and tuition fees. And if you look at that far right column with a 25% drop, we can see that lost revenue approaches $50 million, leaving us with a recalculated general fund reserve of $21 million. And as the chancellor had indicated, looking at today, significantly lower enrollment than we've seen last year. Now, that could well change. As Dr. Fisher indicated, there are mitigation efforts underway to basically target potential students and to deal with their needs to get them to enroll. So those mitigation efforts could well turn this around. But this is, this slide is just intended as an example of how quickly we could eat into that $70.5 million. And the slide only shows changes that result from potential drop in enrollment, but there are other costs that we know that we're likely to incur as we move back to a more normal working environment. But we simply can't predict what will happen to enrollment as a result of the virus. It could go down dramatically, as shown in the charts, or it could increase depending on our mitigation efforts. So in the budget, we have simply left tuition and fees flat. And it's important, I'll just conclude on this slide by stating that it's important for several reasons to maintain an acceptable reserve in the general fund. It's necessary, as I mentioned, to meet unforeseen contingencies, contingencies, and we are now facing uncertain times. It's necessary to demonstrate to the financial community and to our taxpayers that we are a fiscally sustainable organization and that we practice good stewardship over our fiscal resources. And then finally, HLC, we'll look at financial sustainability in our reserves as they go about accrediting our colleges. Next slide, please. Okay, as I said last week, we have sufficient resources to meet our fiscal year 21 budget on July 1st. We do not have a shortfall, but it is difficult to predict resources as we move through the year, especially given the deteriorating economic climate. And there are two major areas of concern for us. First, we mentioned earlier, tuition and fees, and the second is our share of sales tax receipts coming from Proposition 301. Now, we can adjust spending to match changes in resources if we need to. And the slide shows just a few. shows just a few examples and ideas that we are currently exploring. And we're looking at them as tiered responses to potential shortfalls as we move through the next year. And you can see that we have some short-term examples. You saw many of these in the slide last week, a level of adjustments that become increasingly intrusive as it pertains to our employees. And then finally, long-term examples, things like voluntary early retirement program, postponing position reclassifications, slow-filling vacancies, or instituting, if necessary, we may not get there, a soft hiring freeze. Now, we're going to move on to the last area, which is capital. And what, after, after listening to the discussion last week and understanding the hardships that many homeowners face in today's economy, and that the optics of a tax increase at this time may not be good, even though what we proposed in the shift from the secondary tax to the primary tax is only a slight increase. So we came back with an alternative, and the alternative, as laid out here, would be to pause the tax shift for only the coming budget year, the FY21 budget. And what the chart shows is that if we pause the tax shift, we will experience a reduction of $6.7 million that we had otherwise projected into the budget, and it will lower our capital reserve by the same amount. So if you go down to the bottom row, our estimated fund balance, if we pause the tax shift for one year, will be, project, we project at the end of fiscal year 21, that'll be, we'll have a balance of $98.7 million. And that is reduction from, of $6.7 million from what you saw last week, which was, which was an ending balance of about $105 million. Now, however, I think that this is something we can do for one year. I don't think we can do it for multiple years going forward, and our recommendation would be to resume, if this is an acceptable approach, to resume the tax shift and the addition to our capital fund for FY22. And if you look at our total expenditure line, which is second to the bottom, you can see that for colleges and the district, we're spending, we're projecting, and we have planned to spend in our FY21 capital budget $63.6 million. I would expect that that level of need and expenditure and investment would be very similar in fiscal year 22. So if we spend another $63.6 million in fiscal year 22, that ending balance of $98.7 million shrinks down to about $30 million. So at that point, we have an important decision to make in resuming the tax shift and looking very, very carefully at our investment needs in the capital area. And as I have stated, and others know, and you have been presented, we have $380 million in deferred maintenance needs that a consultant has basically provided us with a study on. So we're hoping that the economic outlook will improve over the next several years and that we can come back in the fiscal year 22 budget and resume what we're pausing now with the secondary property tax to primary property tax rate shift. Now, I have one last slide to show you. If you can move, and, and this is pictorial, pictorial of some of the deferred maintenance projects that we have underway on our campus. You can see on the far left picture, we've got significant duct issues. I believe this is from Phoenix College. In the middle, this is a pipeline for chilled water at Mason Community College that is leaking, that has to be repaired. And on the far right, you see a chilled water valve at South Mountain College that is totally corroded and rusted that needs to be replaced. I believe that investments in these facilities also demonstrates our stewardship over our assets, which are funded in part by the taxpayers. Now, we can cover capital investment, our capital investment plan that we have outlined this year under the tax shift pause. But again, we have a huge need to cover over the next number of years. We have few resource options other than what is produced under the tax shift. So with that, President Sullivan, that concludes my part of the presentation. With respect to questions and answers, I'd simply point out that we do have a number of others that are participants in the meeting today that can help with some of the answers that board members might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kinto, for the presentation. As I was looking through my slides this time, I also found I needed to refer to my slides from last time, and I'm hoping board members have the same items available to them. With that, though, last time, what we did, instead of just having kind of a, I don't want to use this pejoratively, a few questions remotely, I identified board members in order that they're present on my computer for attendance as listed, and asked for people's input questions, and then certainly we can get into an exchange if we need to after that. But I'd like to follow through on that process this time as well. Hunter, Ms. Maia, you are listed on my attendance roster there as first. Is there anything that you would like to comment on or refer to as we go through this budget discussion?
I don't, I do not have any comments at this moment.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sarr, I know you're very curious about enrollment and CARES Act, and you have given great thought and consideration to these with other issues, so please.
Thank you. I've got a few questions, and I'll get back with the staff on some other ones I have probably. First of all, regarding the reserve, we have a board policy that requires an 8% reserve. I believe that's the case. Gary, is that part of this, or is that separate from the $70 million or whatever that number is going to be at hand?
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, that is separate from this, and that 8% fiscal sustainability fund was actually increased from 8% to 10% in the FY19 budget.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that that was two separate things. But I want to focus on enrollment, and I know that because our taxpayers kind of subsidize us above and beyond tuition, that we're covered for the same expenditures that we have for this coming fiscal year that we have regardless of what our enrollment is. But if you look at the past four or five years, we've averaged around 6% decline in overall district enrollment for most, for pretty much the same headcount in FTSE. So I'm thinking, you know, we could be, and nationally, this is, as the chancellor said, is something we need to be aware of, that we could be down as much as 40% over the last four or five years, and yet we've maintained, to the most part, our, our variable costs in terms of classroom expenses, which primarily is faculty, and that we've held pretty much the same investment or costs when it comes to non-classroom expenditures. And I'm thinking, as a taxpayer now, a little bit, that if that's the case, first of all, any business that has lost 40% or roughly that amount in, in, you know, four or five years, most likely won't be in business. We're fortunate that the taxpayers are subsidizing, but I'm not sure that they're going to stick with us forever if we continue to have this decline. And I get the fact that this pandemic has caused serious problems, but we've been experiencing this decline in enrollment, and it's because of additional competition. Students have way more options for their classes and their degree pathways than they had a decade ago. So I think we've got to be really concerned about making sure that we're matching our investment from a taxpayer standpoint with what's out there in terms of enrollment decline. I don't want to step on Mrs. McGrath, because I'm sure she's got this on her list as well, but, and I appreciate the fact that you've got some thoughts about how we handle the near and the long term on this. But, you know, think about the fact that we're 23% in this past week, we were 27% the week before, and this is trending nationally for this next calendar year, the fall semester especially. So, and I did a poor job of getting into this last week, but budget-wise, we have to make sure not only that we are solvent, which I'm confident we are for the next fiscal year. However, looking down the road, I see some real possibilities of us not being able to be as solvent as we are now. We're going to see, you know, classes, sizes that are probably lower. My class that I'm still in is down to four students now. So I get it, but I think we've got to really look hard at how we're going to deal with these declining enrollments, and I don't see a lot of signs that we're ready to do that in any big way. Again, I appreciate the fact that the short and long term, you know, possibilities, if you want to call them, are out there. But, you know, I've been involved over the last, you know, two or three decades, I've been in school boards where we had to do reduction in forces, and nobody wants to do that, but we got to make sure that this organization still is viable to the community it serves, and some of this is going to require some pretty hard decisions if, if, in fact, we are down 25% for this coming year, because that, that's going to affect outgoing years as well. So those are my only questions, and I'm, you know, the rest of the budget, I appreciate the work that your staff is doing, Gary, and, and this is a better proposal than it was a week ago, so the effort that you've made, in my mind, is, has been, has been a good return. But we've got some serious problems coming up, and it involves how we maintain our viability in this county with decreasing enrollment, not just because of the pandemic, but because of maybe our product isn't what it should be anymore. So with all that being said, I'll pass on to the next person.
And Mr. Sarr, President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, if I could just comment briefly, it'd take just a minute or less. Yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Sarr, and we do have a group that's being, that is headed up by Dr. Moore, that is looking at all of the items and a lot more that are contained in that fiscal flexibility, fiscal responsibility slide. So there are some dramatic, and I'll repeat that, dramatic things that are being explored. And so as we move through the year and as we look forward to the future, there are things that we can progressively implement to deal with some of the fiscal strain and the enrollment changes you've identified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinto. Dana, I have a, Mr. Sarr, sorry. I have a question on your comments. They're pretty general in many respects, which I appreciate, and also, but they're also very pointed. Is the budget items have been presented for discussion, the COLA, the responsibility to the CARES Act, the reserve? Certainly, you spent most of your time discussing the fiscal responsibility and then the capital relationship to tax. Is there anything in specific in those areas that you have comment on?
Well, if you do the simple math, and with the number of students that we have, and I use FTSE because it's a better indicator of mine for when we talk about class sizes and allocating faculty resources, both full-time faculty and adjuncts, I think that's an area that we need to spend a lot of time in. Like I said early on, this next coming year, because of how we're funded, we're not going to be in a fiscal problem. But beyond that, I think we've got a lot of work to do to make sure we're matching up our classroom resources, be it online or in the classroom, with the number of students that we have. And that's going to take some, as it says here, some realignment of our colleges. We may have to really get serious about some of the things we've talked about for a decade when it comes to our 10 colleges and how each of those regionally takes care of their constituents. But, you know, the good news is we're good for this next year, but I'm really concerned about the outgoing years.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next on my list is Mrs. McGrath. You're up for comment and discussion on any of these items, as much or as little as you'd like to do. I don't see Mrs. McGrath on mute. Are you there, Mrs. McGrath? Okay, we'll come back to her. Then, Mrs. Nguyen, you're next.
Yeah, I'm here. I just had unmute.
No, that's okay. I didn't know. I was thinking, maybe I lost myself. I, I.
I probably, I, I, oh, Mrs. McGrath is there, and she's off mute. Can you hear?
Yeah, she was before too. So I'll come back to her. Let's, let's move to you, and then I'll go, Mrs. McGrath.
I just wanted to, so I wanted to thank Mr. Gary Kinto, sorry, for being responsive to our concerns from last week. I appreciate that. As I listen to everything that's being said, I think the numbers that we have, I think we're in a unique place. I, I understand that enrollment is down right now as we take this snapshot, but I think there's a lot of contributing factors to that. We've never been in a pandemic like this. So I, I think it's wrong to compare it to 2008, because that was set up, that was a, although it's having economic impact, I think that it is, the other one was driven through the, the financial markets. This one, obviously, is a medical, and unfortunately, the effect looks the same. I think it would be just insensitive to everything that's going on in our community to try to come out with a tax increase at this time. I think that would just be, just unrealistic, and we have to be a part of our community. So I would be against, I liked what was presented, and I, I think we have enough resources right now. As for the enrollment, I think as we start to get our footing as a state in that country, and we start to resume and go back to life, I think our enrollments will go up. One of the positive trends that I've seen is that with all these kids coming home from college, these expensive colleges where they are now just doing their classes online, parents have started to see, well, they could just pay for their kids to go to a community college and get the same effect. Maybe they don't need to spend those thousands of dollars to send their kids, because the education level, they're paying way more money to go to, to a private college or a public college, and that they could get the, at least for classes that we offer. So I think. So I think the community college should have a resurgence, and I'm not as pessimistic about the future. I think we have learned some lessons through this that we're going to need to analyze and adapt. Having to put everything online has been a good education for us, and I think we can use that to our advantage. So I think that as we look forward, we should do an analysis of where we lost people, which classes didn't translate, which classes did, get some real financial numbers underneath us, and then prioritize the projects that we need, and look at the cost value of that, and see what we need to do to keep our colleges operational. I'm confident that we will come back. I think that we're doing a lot of the right things, and we just haven't seen the effect of our efforts, because we didn't know that this was coming, and no one was prepared for it. And I think we've navigated very quickly and efficiently, and that we will reap the benefits of that. So those are my comments, and thank you for asking.
Sure. Is there, speaking today, more specific, last time you asked comments about fiscal responsibility, we did hear your comments on tax, anything else on that or COLA in?
No, I think, I think they were, I think they were addressed today, and so I didn't, I didn't need to belabor the point. I think, I, I, I think it's difficult, I understand, I think my biggest concern is the whole cost of living thing for our staff. Our staff is, is doing a great job. I, I'm just not confident that we have some holes in our numbers. We don't know certain things right now, and we're trying to do projections based on circumstances that are unprecedented. So whatever numbers we're getting, we're trying to look at right now are all a guess, and they're not even educated guess, because we have been in circumstances like. So I, I think that what we've got in front of us, I'd like to kind of keep it as even keel as possible. I don't think it's in our best interest to go to the taxpayer right now and raise taxes at all. But then what do we do with what our monies are, and how do we best distribute those funds that we have, and keep us moving forward, and then attract students to, to our colleges? I mean, that's, that's where we're at. But right now, if you're asking, do I want to go tax the taxpayers, the answer is no.
No, I heard that one clear. I just was wondering if there were comments on others.
I, I think it was very straightforward. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Kathleen. And Mrs. McGrath, I'm coming back to you. Were you present?
Yes, yes. I, I agree with what Mr. Sar had to say, that we absolutely have to find a way to reduce expenses. I've been thinking about this for quite a while, and thinking perhaps one way we could do it would be just to close one of our campuses. I'm thinking particularly of, unfortunately, our flagship one, Phoenix College, because as from what I can gather, the student population has moved away from Phoenix College. And anyway, we have to find a way to reduce expenses. Some, that's my main comment. Thank you.
Sure. You had comments last time about taxes. Do you have any comment on what's been presented this afternoon?
No, I am obviously still opposed to increasing taxes.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. And now, Mr. Hendrix.
I got a couple of questions. I hadn't considered closing colleges. If we closed them all, we'd save a lot of money.
Sorry.
On the CARES, I meant that facetiously, just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking a little bit. If we were all together, I wouldn't have a spin on my face.
We wouldn't laugh.
My, my first question is on the, on the CARES funding. When we met last week, I talked about a seventy million dollar surplus, and a twenty million dollar handout from the federal government, and I believe Mr. Kinto corrected me and said that it was a seventy million dollar reserve fund, and that we didn't know what kind of restrictions were going to be on the twenty million dollars from the federal government. And as the presentation began, I noticed that five different times it was mentioned that we could not just use the twenty million dollar handout from the feds for expansion or, or new programs. It had to be used to backfill costs directly related to COVID or losses associated with it, and not for anything else. And then we see the slide, I think it was the second slide, it showed, I think it was four point seven million in costs, and around one point seven or one point eight million in savings, so somewhere in the three and a half million dollar, three million dollar range of expenses or new costs created by COVID. So I'm, I'm just curious, since it's, it was critical enough to point out five different times that this is not additional funds that the district should look at as part of their budget, I'm assuming we're sending back the other seventeen million. Is that correct?
And, I'm sorry, President Sullivan, Mr. Hendrix, I, I think, I'm not sure how that works. We do have a group of individuals that have been looking at the CARES assistance quite closely, trying to interpret and understand what we're required to do, what we can't do. And I would simply defer, we have a couple individuals. Kim Grineo is available to help answer that question, as is Bettina Sellis, and I would ask one of them if they might have an answer to your question.
That's fine. Whomever is leading that group, Kim or?
Yeah. Hi, Mrs. Sullivan, and members of the board. Mr. Hendrix, so I guess what I would say to that is the numbers that you're looking at on that slide, or that you saw on that slide, are what we have to date. And of course, the largest portion of that are faculty costs to extend the semester. So we are not finished capturing the costs that we are experiencing relating to COVID-19. So we're not anywhere close to finishing with what those expenses might be. It is my estimation that we will do everything we can to try to figure out how to use the twenty million dollars, provided that it is appropriate, before we ever send anything back. But we don't know what the summer brings, we don't know if we will have additional costs related to COVID-19 coming up in the summer, we're not sure what we'll have in the fall as well. We do have up to a year to extend those funds. I, I think what Gary was just trying to get at was that it's not necessarily additional money into the budget, it's likely to cover, or it should be covering, additional expenses that we wouldn't have otherwise had in either fiscal twenty or fiscal twenty-one that are directly related to COVID-19. Hope that helps.
Hey, I, I guess so. I guess what you're telling me is we're going to do everything we can to find a way to spend more taxpayer money, because we wouldn't want to give it back to the people that earned it. And it's not really what I would agree with. If we need the money, that's one thing, but to go find a way to spend it and look near and far to find some way to spend somebody else's money, because we don't want to give it back to them when they earned it, it's not really the direction I would go. But I guess I would say from that slide, I'm not sure there was anything to gain from that slide. It sounds like that was just a slide, do we explain there's costs and justify a way to spend some more money, is what it sounds like, but I'm, I'm not sure there was any value to that slide. But I'll move on to my next question. Couple of slides after that, we were talking about the COLA, and I don't necessarily have a problem with a COLA to attract quality people. There was a slide that showed three curves on there, one being the MC, I think it was labeled MCCD Pay, or something to that effect. And there was a, some sort of a CPI index, a couple of other things on there in Phoenix and that. On the, on the axis on the vertical side, it showed dollar numbers, and the MCCD Pay showed something like fifty-one thousand. What is that?
I'd be happy to answer that, President Sullivan, Mr. Hendrix. The way we, the way we constructed this, we started with a hypothetical employee that we assumed earned fifty thousand dollar salary in twenty fifteen, twenty, yeah, twenty fifteen. And over the six-year period of the projection horizon, we built in the pay increases that that hypothetical employee earned in each year. And so it grew, and if we could bring the slide up. Tina, could you bring up slide number seven? Is that possible?
One moment, please, while I get the technology up.
Okay. There you go. Slide number seven. So over that projection horizon, twenty fifteen through twenty twenty, that hypothetical employee that earned fifty thousand dollars in twenty fifteen got pay increases throughout that period, and today, based on those increases, it would be earning fifty-two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, if my eyesight is correct. And that is what we're comparing then against how that same employee salary would have grown if it just simply matched each of those two inflation indices. So the orange line, the red line shows if that employee pay salary simply grew at the level of the Phoenix Consumer Price Index, that person would end up in twenty twenty, that fifty thousand would grow to fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. And with the, the gross domestic product implicit price deflator, it would have grown even higher to fifty, some fifty-nine thousand dollars. So the difference between the lines shows the inflation gap that employees faced over the past six years.
Okay, so what really, that's the slope of the lines, more than anything, than the rate of increase.
Yeah, and so you can see it flattening out for our employees, while you see a steady growth or the inflation indices.
So when we calculate that, what are we using for the wage increase? Are we, are we assuming that every employee in Maricopa is getting the same percentage increase at the same time? Or is this some group of employees, or what is this?
This, yeah, this, this would be a typical, or a hypothetical classified employee.
Okay, so, so then every classified employee gets the exact same increase, the exact same COLA, exact same everything, the entire time they're with Maricopa? Is that, I guess that's not how I understand it works.
Well, over this, over this time period, we simply took, we have the history of pay increases back probably twenty years or so, and so, and it's divided out by a group of employees. So we just simply took the increase that was awarded, whether it was a COLA, whether it was a step increase, what it, whatever it might have been for a classified employee over that time period.
So every single one got the same step increase, every single one got the same COLA? No one got any sort of extra performance pay of any sort?
That's my understanding.
I don't think, I don't think that's correct.
And perhaps either Dr. Gonzalez, or perhaps Georgetta Kelly might be able to answer that question. But it's my understanding that we just simply took all of the changes that the board had awarded, pay increases the board had awarded to classified employees over that time period.
I think we did more detail on exactly what you included in here, because I don't see how you could take the group, unless you're telling me that every single person in that group got the exact same changes, the exact same step increases. If that's what you're telling me, it's possible, that's correct, but I don't believe that's correct. And if that's not correct, this data is meaningless. Does anybody else on the line know? Is, is that correct? Every single person got the exact same step increase, the exact same COLA? Anywhere from a ten dollar person to a forty thousand, fifty thousand dollar a year person, they all got exactly the same?
They didn't.
It seems like I just recall some stipends and things that you wouldn't have been able to do on a percentage basis. It's impossible.
Ms., Mr. Hendrix, I, I do think, just from what I understand, the adjuncts have been separated and would have a different measure of.
On this graph, what, what is this graph? I mean, there's some sort of data being presented to me right now, tell me that we need to spend more money. And what I want to know is what does this graph tell me? I don't think it tells me anything, but what I'm trying to do is convince me that it does.
My impression is it just represents the difference between what an average Phoenix employee would receive, a state of Arizona employee would receive based on speculation, and the impact of salaries have not been par comparatively, just in terms of dollars with other individuals. So it's not.
I understand that's what you're trying to say, but I'm trying to understand the data, because the slope of that curve is what's relevant there, it's not the gap. And if the slope of that curve is weighted by employees that were new employees, or lower end employees, or employees that have less tenure with the district, this, this data is meaningless, unless that, that curve represents somebody, either some one employee, some group of employees, but it can't represent some of them or most of them, it has to represent all of them, if you're going to compare it to these other curves. I, I don't think this graph tells us anything, other than somebody wants to convince us we need to spend more money.
Do we understand what hypothetical means?
Somebody can dispute that, please do.
I, I would, I would just, this is Dr. I did not think the word hypothetical is the key point of this, and all I think that we're saying is that a person starting at fifty thousand dollars, based on the average increases in salary over this, this time period, has increased this much, based on, as opposed to what they do for Phoenix and the state at large. So hypothetical is the key word here, so keep that in mind, please.
Well, that, that might be correct. Average increases, if we're just going to take an average, but then average of who? Because if we hired in some lower-end employees to assist with transformation, that's going to skew this curve downward, which is what it is.
So we want a gravity in this presentation. If we want a presentation, if we would, to do it, what you're saying, that we, this presentation would be forty-five, fifty pages long, but I think this was the.
Maybe it should be.
Is that it's a hypothetical, based on, on the average employee, starting at, at this amount for this number of years. So we just need to keep that in mind. If we want more detail, then perhaps we need to ask for the more detail.
I don't know what the average employee is. If I handpick the right one, I might show that he's basically getting increases for an excess of the CPI. And I, I don't know what they picked there, but I suspect since the rest of the presentation is focused on increasing expenditures, I suspect they picked a group that would, that would prove their data. If you handpick one that's gotten larger increase, let's take the chancellor, for example, let's take the chancellor over the last ten years. I would imagine the chancellor's pay has gone far above the GDP or above the CPI in Phoenix, probably by a factor of two hundred percent. So why don't we use that one, instead of using this one, or whoever this is, if it's anybody, I'm not sure this represents anybody. So we'll, we'll move on, but I, I don't think there's any data in this slide. This is just another.
Okay, so it's a useless slide for you, and do you have further comment in general about the status of the COLA?
I've got another question on, as we were talking about the COLA, you referred to the increased contribution in the retirement program, that it's going to go up one percent. It will reduce an employee's net pay. And I'm just curious what you meant by that, because if you're telling me, if an employee's expenses go up, I need to give them a raise so their net pay stays the same, conceivably, they could increase their health insurance policy, because they want a better policy. And because it comes out of their paycheck, we should give them a raise so their net pay stays the same. Or it's possible someday we'd make their car payment form out of their paycheck and give them a raise to cover that too. I'm, I'm not clear why it's relevant that their cost to benefit their retirement is any concern of ours. We pay them a gross pay, they spend it how they please. Why would we be focused on their net pay?
And, and if I, President Sullivan, Mr. Hendrix, if I could take a shot at that, no, it's, it is, you know, it is a forced savings account, and the point of the matter is that it is, it shows up as a deduction from an employee's pay, and it is another hit to them, if you will, because they don't see this, it's a forced savings account, and they're not going to see it immediately, they'll see it upon retirement, or when they leave. They'll see it upon retirement or when they leave the employee of the district. But for an employee, if you put yourself in an employee's position and they get their two-week pay stub and it shows less money, it is to them less money. And it is another thing that is deducted from their pay that is money that they cannot use to meet whatever current obligations they have to pay mortgages, to pay car payments, to buy groceries, and on and on and on.
Who benefits from their retirement?
Who benefits from their retirement?
Yeah, who gets their retirement money after they get it? Where does that money go? Does it go back to the district?
No, it doesn't go back.
It benefits them. I don't see any problem with them paying to benefit their own retirement. I think that comment that basically their net pay changed is completely irrelevant. I mean, nobody hires an employee based on their net pay. You hire them based on their gross pay and they spend their money how they please. Let's move on to the reserve fund as we talked about. You referred to the $70 million surplus that we have as a reserve fund. And Mr. Thor kind of beat me to the question when he pointed out, and I'm assuming you're aware that you reviewed this prior to today. You're aware that we kept an 8% reserve fund because we wanted to maintain our bond rating. We raised it to 10% because we wanted to further protect our bond rating, as has been shown by the rates we've gotten again and again because of the fiscal sustainability, to use your term, that we've shown. So we all agree, we have a required 10% truly reserve fund. That's what a reserve fund is. That's why we call it a reserve fund. This surplus 70 million we have, that's not a reserve. That's excess funds that we're collecting that we don't need. So by your own words, you said it showed fiscal responsibility and fiscal sustainability to maintain a 10% reserve fund. We have a reserve fund. This additional 10% gives us a 20%, if you want to call it a reserve fund. I would call it a 10% reserve, as we noted in the budget, and a 10% excess. But if you want to call it a reserve, that's a 20% reserve. There isn't anybody that keeps a 20% reserve. Even the bonding companies are thrilled with our 10%. I don't know where that thought comes from. The true story is we have a $70 million excess that we don't need, that we don't have a plan for. But as with the extra 17 million in CARES money, we will spend our time looking far and wide to find a place to spend that. Far be it that we give it back to the taxpayer that earned it. Let's find a way to spend it. The slide showing potential enrollment drops and what the cost would be, I believe it showed 10%, 15%, 25% enrollment drops and the associated costs of each of those drops. I'm just curious, when the chancellor began our discussion today, he commented that he had taken the time to review our numbers back in 2008 when we entered the recession and that we'd seen a bump in enrollment as people were looking to retrain and find jobs. I see the ways that we can reduce our income by assuming enrollment drops 10% 20, 25. Was it just an oversight that we didn't consider the potential people might come back in a recession and want more education and perhaps we'd have more coming in?
And if President Sullivan, Mr. Hendricks, if I could respond to both of those points. In terms of the enrollment drop, no, this was a hypothetical. And we don't know what's going to happen in enrollment. And as the chancellor indicated, as we came out of the 2008 recession in 2009, our enrollment actually increased by 11.4%. And I have gone back and I've looked at those numbers. But as Board Member Wynn pointed out, we are in a much different situation today. We can't just simply transpose what happened in the 2008 to 2011 period onto today's conditions. And for that very fact, because we can't today predict that we're going to have a 25% drop in enrollment or we're going to have an 11.4% increase in enrollment for that very fact in our budget that we created, we kept enrollment and tuition flat with no change because we don't know what's going to happen. On your first question regarding, sure.
And Gary, Mr. Hendricks will wait for Mr. Yacinto's response.
And on your first point regarding what is the fiscal sustainability fund of $70 million, that is viewed as being in a lockbox that we would not touch until the point that things got so severe, you were talking about closing the doors of the district and its colleges. That is set aside for that purpose, much like the state's rainy day fund is set aside not to be used unless encountering extreme distress. So that's why that one is there. And hopefully, I was able to describe the enrollment situation that we're facing, the fact that there is so much uncertainty. We don't know what to do with respect to enrollment today. And that's why our budget is built on enrollment and tuition staying flat into FY21.
I agree that the present. I agree the presentation was based on hypotheticals. I guess I just don't understand why there was no hypothetical increase when, this is not unprecedented circumstances. It might be unprecedented that we have a virus or a pandemic. We've had recessions. When the chancellor referred to 2008, that was entering a recession. This is entering a recession potentially. It's not a surprise. It's not unprecedented. It's not unheard of. We've dipped into what you call the rainy day fund or the financial sustainability fund before, and we've replenished it. That's what it's there for. We didn't close any colleges before we dipped into it, and we're not again. That's not going to happen. But let's shift to the tax shift where we talk about shifting the secondary tax to the primary tax. I think everybody agrees the shift from the secondary to the primary was a good decision and a good move when we did it. It seems the only choice we have here is we have to be sure we maintain the tax increase. That seems to be the focus of the presentation, no matter what. I don't understand, we have a $70 million surplus plus 17 million. We don't know what we can do with. That's hypothetical money that we just can't do anything that would offset a tax increase. We don't want to do that, but we could do something else with it. We just don't know what. Why can't we continue to shift to the primary as we planned before and not increase total taxes? I mean, has there even been a calculation made to how much of the 70 million plus the 15 million we would have to use to make that? And I understand why we can't do both. We keep talking like they're mutually exclusive.
Before you answer that question, Mr. Yacinto, because I believe there has been some examination of that. When it comes to, this presentation is more than the tax piece and it hasn't been predicated on that. So there are the different buckets. And certainly, it's appropriate that we have the opportunity to discuss them. I'd like us to proceed recognizing that it's important for us to engage in Q and A. And with that, and be cognizant of how this material came to be as opposed to making presumptions. So, Mr. Yacinto, and please go forward.
Thank, thank you. And President Sullivan, I think you hit on the correct point there. And that is, you know, we were conflating general fund for operations, investments and expenditures with our capital fund, which is intended for our facilities. And that's why they are separate and they are looked at separately for that very purpose.
So to Mr. Hendricks' question then, is there a way to move secondary to primary without a tax increase?
Based on the law, there is not. The truth in taxation, I think it's a great question. But under the truth in taxation law, which was put into place back in the late 70s and 1980, it was designed, it was, it came after the Proposition 13 that was put into place in California, basically to protect property owners from tax increases and prevent taxing jurisdictions like our district from getting greater revenues simply from increased valuations. So with any shift that we might do under the truth in taxation law is considered a tax increase and we must publish that tax increase in the newspaper.
Okay, so if we have to publish the tax increase, we can still calculate it so as the total tax does not increase.
I guess the law requires us.
Primary may increase.
The law requires us anytime our levy increases, our tax levy increases, it has to be published in the newspaper. If we do not do the shift, the levy does not increase and we do not need to publish. It is not a tax increase.
Aside from publishing and procedural operations, it is possible to continue to shift from the second to the primary and not have an increase in total tax by the taxpayer.
Under, under the, under the law, no, that's not the case. It is a tax increase.
So perceptually, it's a tax increase technically, but it doesn't equal a $1.55 on a tax person? I mean, in my property values, is that how that shows? How do you get to a zero on your property tax without recognizing that it's a tax increase because you're increasing the perception? Is there a dollar figure? I said one cent? Is it two cents or is it impossible to do?
I think, yeah, and that is a difficult question to answer. I don't think the law was set up, you know, to, to that precise detail. A 1% or a two, I'm sorry, a one cent or a two cent increase is still an increase and we'd have to comply with the law.
You're talking about an increase in the primary tax.
I'm talking about an increase in taxes, period.
Now, this is Linda Thor. I don't think so. Okay, since, since we started this, which I believe was 2017, we always understood that we were looking at the primary tax and the secondary tax together. That as the secondary tax was decreasing, we would shift some of that capacity over to the primary tax, recognizing that that increases the primary tax. But for the property taxpayer, the combination of the decreased secondary and the increased primary resulted still in a tax decrease. So again, as I mentioned last week, I mean, actua, the Arizona Tax Research Association was cheering us on on this kind of an approach which avoids a general obligation bond, which is much more expensive for taxpayers than what we're doing here. So what we need to be talking about is what is the impact of primary and secondary combined on the taxpayer? And even though the primary is going up, the net impact on the taxpayer is a decrease.
And President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, I understand the argument. The other, the other piece, however, that is not being considered is that valuations have gone up as well. And that has to be taken into account. So in our previous example, the $100,000 home increased in valuation by 3.1%. So now the tax that is levied on that property owner is on a higher valuation than it was the year before. So that is what causes the tax increase and the reason why we would have to, under truth and taxation law, report that and have that increase in the levy published.
But it would still result in the, in the total tax combined as being the same or less?
Under the, under the tax shift, if you do nothing, if you do nothing, the tax will stay the same.
So how you're explaining it, I don't mean to be redundant, is because of the increase in property value assessments, if you make any sort of shift, it can't be a zero because of the increase in property assessment.
Yes.
So regardless, it translates into a tax increase by making the shift.
Only in the, only in the primary.
Correct.
The secondary has gone down.
Well, we did show that in the, in the slide last time that your tax ratio did go down. I think, I'm trying to find the slide. But there was a tax increase. And in spite of the, from what I heard from several board members is that in spite of the tax ratio declining, it still was an increase by making the shift to the taxpayer, which equaled a tax increase. So if we want the discussion to be on the, on the tax ratio, up or down, that's one thing. If we want the conversation to be, will the property owner pay more money? In any regard, if we make any movement, that's another thing.
Well, and I think we have to remember that we have to have capital dollars to maintain these colleges. And if we don't get capital dollars this way, we're left with another alternative, which is either a general obligation bond or COPS or whatever it is that we're going to have to do, which is far more costly to taxpayers than approaching it this way.
I don't think there's any refuting of your, of your comment. Everyone here, as board members, are entitled to, obviously, their perception and a point of view on any of these issues. The question is, what ends up in the budget going forward? And the purpose of our discussion is to determine what that is. So, Mr. Hendricks, before I shift to Dr. Thor, do you have any other comments on this?
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Thor. She may have verbalized it better than I did. But if I'm understanding correctly, truth in taxation is largely a disclosure requirement. It doesn't cause taxes or remove taxes. It's a disclosure requirement. And whether we make disclosure, don't make the disclosure, we don't make decisions based on that. I mean, we decide what we're going to do. And if we need to make a truth in taxation disclosure, we do. But I believe that what Dr. Thor described is what I was trying to say, but she did a better job of it.
Everyone's doing, I mean, we want to make sure we're polite and succinct to as best we can, correct?
President Sullivan, if I may.
Yes.
There's been great discussion in this. And just when I think I have an understanding of this, I'm still slightly baffled by it. And I think that this, this requires some additional investigation. Maybe, you know, a more pointed example of what we're saying and taking in Mr. Hendricks and Dr. Thor's question and clarification on that. So if we could maybe get another shot at this, we'll be happy to continue to investigate that.
Okay, we certainly have the timing issue on that and absolutely support you delving into this a little more specifically now that that conversation expanded beyond last week. And we would need to have that information in the next few days to be communicated. So please keep me in the loop on that so we can schedule that discussion.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. We've exceeded our 5:30 time. I have two board members still to make comment. Dr. Thor, do you have further comment? And then I'll move to Dr. Narine.
Yes, I'll try to make them brief. Yes, I'll try to make them brief. First, I want to comment on enrollment and the comparisons to same point in time last year. I, you know, recognize that we have potential enrollment problems, that we could have great enrollment problems. But I also think point-in-time comparisons are really useless right now because everyone is behaving in an other-than-normal way. And that I do think that we could get people coming to our colleges who need to retrain. I think also, we could see students who would have otherwise been going off to live in dorms in universities, staying at home instead. So time will only tell. We just... We have to be prepared. Wanted to comment on the criteria for the CARES emergency grant. I realize there's nothing we can do about it, but I think it's extremely unfortunate, particularly requirements like they must have a high school completion, GED, or homeschool certification. That's something that community colleges have never required of our students. And similarly, when we have a college like Rio Salado, whose students are primarily online, it's heartbreaking to see them discriminating against online students. I also was thinking about the institutional portion of the CARES Act. And appreciate that we have identified where we have cost already. But I'm probably pessimistic enough to think that we're going to continue to have cost into the summer and probably into the fall. And we also need to remember that the act does allow us to shift institutional portions over to student emergency grants. And part of our enrollment solution may be getting those emergency grants into the hands of students so that they can pay their tuition for the summer and the fall. I have made my comments about the tax, the shift in the property tax. I would add, though, to have gone from our conversation last week to wiping out the shift seems really extreme to me. As I listen to Mr. Yacinto, I think we're having multiple conversations here, and we'd have to kind of find a way that we're all talking the same language and are sharing the same mental model of what we're talking about. Because I would prefer to see us reduce the amount of money that we're shifting over to the primary, but don't wipe it out entirely because it has impact not only next year, but on into the future. And I think... I think that is everything that I wanted to comment about.
Dr. Thor, last time you made comment on COLA, do you have any comment on that?
Right. Well, yes, yes. I will say basically the same thing I said last time, that our employees' spending power has been eroding year after year after year. And although we've made some small COLAs, given some small COLAs, they've been less than what either the Phoenix CPI was or the Arizona index. Also, at the same... You know, I've got a lot of history with this district. And I remember when employees used to get STEPS and they got COLAs. Employees don't get STEPS anymore. The only increases they're getting are these minimal COLAs. And frankly, now that I see last week's chart and this week's chart, I'm embarrassed as a governing board member that we have let our employees slip this far behind. So now, more than ever, is the time for us to support our employees and show them that we appreciate the incredible work that they're doing right now and that we'll make adjustments in other areas other than employee compensation.
Thank you, Dr. Thor, for your comments. Dr. Narini?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to agree with everything Dr. Thor is saying. And just make it brief, just we want to...
Sure, where budget will go on the COLA. So we'll try to work through that a little bit more, or they will, on which one to incorporate into a budget. Maybe we'll see two. With that, I do want to remind us all that we do have perspectives and interpretations. And when we are online, it's a little bit harder, at least for me, and I don't want to speak for the rest of you, but perhaps, to discern where people are always coming from. And all we have is voice. And with voice, we miss the additional nuances that can come through body language or in different mannerisms. And I think it's utmost imperative that as we try to work through our items that we agree on and the items that we might have different perspectives, that it's important for us all to be respectful to each other and to be respectful to the people that are working on our behalf to bring us the information that we need. That is just, in general, it's my position. I know it's hard for me sometimes to figure out, how am I going to manage all of this? So I'm not asking for empathy or sympathy, just making that comment. Appreciate, again, all the hard work done by the finance office, board members. I appreciate you delving into the material that you received. We already have the material presented to us on the agenda for the May 5 meeting. Please take another look at that. If there is something that you want to discuss further. Or together or apart, we need to know that. And please share that to Ms. Cooper and myself so we can address that, so we can know for sure, do we go ahead with the meeting on the 5th? Do we need a little more time? But the latest I could postpone that meeting with the first read of the budget is May 12. So please communicate your thinking and feelings on that as we await a little more discernment and discussion on a couple of these other items. So before I absolutely close, is there any other comment from any other board member? Nan, is there anything from you, Dr. Gonzalez?
Sorry, I had to unmute that note. President Sullivan, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Mr. Yacinto, thank you for your presentation. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
President Sullivan, if I might, just interject one last item here. And that is, we do need to know, we do need to have direction on the tax piece. Because if there is... Because if there's any change from not doing it to doing something, To do the truth in taxation, and we need to get the information to the Arizona Republic by May 4.
So if you could work to get us information in the next day or two, what you need, two days, with the clarification on the... So to Dr. Thor's point and Mr. Hendricks' point, we can be on the same page.
Sure.
Then we can have another discussion on that, and from there, give you direction.
Great. Okay.
Does that work for everyone? Okay, any other comments for the good of the order? If not, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being in attendance.